Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. This is meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. All council members are present, although we're very far away from each other because we are practicing good social distancing tonight. As well, we are dealing in real time to a crisis. And part of that is communicating with our community on what we are doing and what we're hoping for our community. And to that, I have a council response that we've put together, and we're going to do a shared reading of that. And so I will lead off with that. All around us, people are losing their livelihoods, worrying about the vulnerable people they love and experiencing isolation. Some are exhausted workers who provide healthcare, essential services, and groceries. Those who are quarantined or highly vulnerable cannot leave their homes. And those without shelter have no home in which to take refuge. While we work together to respond, let's keep kindness contagious. Already, we have seen people stepping up to help. Many are organizing to offer mutual support for individual needs. Services provides and businesses are innovating to offer community care. Governments are rapidly responding, including ours, and coordinating in unprecedented ways. The governor is asking each of us to stay home and stay safe for a while. But there are actions we can take to help ourselves and our friends and neighbors get through this unprecedented period.
It's okay to go outside. You can enjoy the good weather and take a walk and get some air, but please, keep your interactions with others at a safe distance of six feet. Try to keep your outings for essential purposes only, like going to the grocery store, seeing your doctor, or going to the bank. Those essential services and businesses remain open during the emergency.
Get on the phone. Check in with your family, friends, neighbors, and colleagues with a personal phone call or video chat during a time of physical distance. Hearing another voice can help people feel safe and calm. It will remind people to contact you if they need help.
If you live in an apartment, reach out to your property manager and work with them to develop safe protocol to share information with other tenants in your building. Coordinate delivery services and supply runs.
Be safe with your support. If you are purchasing shared supplies, volunteering your time, or otherwise engaged in mutual aid, follow the CDC guidelines to prevent further spread of the virus. This includes frequent hand washing, disinfecting surfaces, and monitoring yourself for early symptoms that indicate you are ill. Take your temperature every time you leave your home.
If you own property and cannot pay your mortgage, contact your lender and tell them you need grace. If you are a landlord or a property manager, please reach out to your tenants and ask them how they have been impacted. Tenants, please alert your landlord as early as possible if you will not be able to pay your rent.
Purchase only what you need. There is a high demand for essential supplies to support basic needs. If you buy more than you need, the next person may not get what they need. As you shop in grocery stores, be extra aware of social distancing and sanitation to protect workers.
And finally, breathe. This is a high anxiety time, and it's not helped by the isolation necessary to limit the spread of the virus. And now, some of the ways we may have managed our stress are not available to us. Say, working out at the gym, meeting friends for dinner or drinks. Often, just taking a few deep breaths can help us take a step back from our stress. There are resources online for taking care of your emotional health during this emergency. One source is the CDC's COVID-19 website. After this period of social distance, we will be a more connected community. We all have a role to play to bring ourselves through the emergency response and on to recovery. I'd like to thank Councilmember Madron for helping draft up these talking points for us this evening. And we as well will not be meeting as a council for the next two weeks. That was already a planned break in our business meeting schedule. We will be carrying on, of course, the other business of the city and our other subcommittee meetings as a council. But we will probably be adjusting some of our schedule when we reconvene in two weeks. We're looking at starting at 5:30. So please stay tuned to the city website to make sure you don't miss any of our future meetings. And with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. We have an agenda. We have a special recognition this evening. I'd like to invite forward Keith Daly, our interim assistant city manager, to give us an update on the every 10-year process of a census. And so, the U.S. Constitution requires us to complete a count or census of the nation's population every 10 years. The census is used for a variety of purposes that Keith will go over here and include determining the number of representatives that each state has in Congress and distributing and how we distribute federal funds to local communities each year. So with that, Keith.
That's a great start, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You wrote it.
Thank you. Members of City Council, I'm here this evening to speak to you very briefly about our census. As you should know by now, this is a census year. This is the 24th time in the history of the United States that we've conducted this census. It goes back 230 years. The first census was conducted in 1790. Things have changed a bit since then. They were not doing the census online then. But today, you should have received by now, sometime between the 12th and the 20th, every address in the United States, every residential address in the United States should have received this envelope. This envelope contains a specific code for your property. You go to the designated address online, and you enter in your code, and there's three easy steps to completing the census. Census is online this year. April 1st is the deadline for responding. They have delayed sending out workers into the field to follow up with people in real time and in person. That will happen later this year. But again, the Census Bureau is encouraging everyone to respond and do it online. So as I said, we got the card in the mail, and it is a very straightforward process. The address is my2020census.gov. It brings up a start questionnaire button. You click on the button, and it will ask you for some basic information about yourself: name, date of birth, anybody else living in your household, the name and date of birth of those individuals as well. They'll ask you questions about your household, and then they'll ask questions about individuals. And literally, it is that simple. I sat down at my desk today and did this PowerPoint simultaneously while doing and responding to the census and was able to get it done in about 10 minutes. So we were fortunate enough to receive a grant from the Department of Commerce, about $5,600, to help in our local outreach effort. Obviously, things have changed a little bit for us. We're not planning on doing outreach tables at some of the larger events because we're not having larger events right now. So we're going to probably focus that to be more of an online presence here going Some things have continued to move. The mayor got an email today from the Department of Census saying that the dates have shifted for that final count, when they will terminate the field count and start moving towards hard numbers. And with that, again, we encourage everyone to participate. There will be obviously opportunities right here in your own home. And for those who aren't counted, there are specific dates for houseless individuals, for example, where this census will be targeting those individuals. Those dates have rolled forward. They were going to be March 30th, 31st, and April 1st. Those dates have rolled out, and they're still evaluating, you know, when exactly that will occur. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, look forward to you being counted along with everybody else. These are extremely important numbers. As we move into even this response for the COVID virus that we're all now dealing with, federal aid is based on obviously impact, but also on our population. So federal aid, including our Community Development Block Grant and other federal aid, is based on population. So important economic impacts as well as our political impacts. So there we go.
All right. Any questions for Keith? Councilmember Parshley?
More comment if you're at home, doing the good social isolation, and you're looking for something to spend 10 minutes on because you're tired of TV. Get online and do your census.
Perfect opportunity.
I like it. It'll be curious to see if they're getting better participation this time than 10 years ago because of people having to be forced at home with something to do. So thank you for that presentation. And if you have any questions, you can check out that website on Thurston County's landing page. All right. With that, we are going to public comment. We are doing that online now. That's a new change since the response to the crisis. And today, I think we received two comments that I believe staff are going to be attending to unless anybody read those. Councilmember Owens.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond. The comments, the two comments that we received had to do with businesses staying open. And I wanted to direct folks, there are quite a list, a 14-page document of what are considered the essential businesses and workforce. And you can find that and more information at coronavirus.wa.gov that has all the official state response related to the virus.
Good thing to bring up while we're on camera. Thank you very much. Yes? All right. So we're going to go to our consent calendar, and I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any questions, comments, or polls?
I do have a question and comment on 4W.
4W? All right. So we're going to pull that for a question, and I believe our Chair of Finance is going to be handling that.
I'd like to comment on 4S.
4S? Okay.
I'll make a comment on 4W, too.
4W? And then I was going to also make, I had a question on 4J.
And I have a comment or question on 4W as well.
4W, okay, great. So why don't we, since that one has the most interest, why don't we start with item 4W, which on our consent, oopsie, my consent calendar is all stuck together here, sorry. 4W is approval, consideration of approval of an ordinance appropriating $550,000 of funds from the Economic Development Reserve Program to support community economic recovery efforts. It's on first and final reading. And so this came through our finance committee last week, and so I'm going to have our Chair, Jim Cooper, speak to.
Yeah, actually, I think if the city manager can tee it up a little bit, and then we can hear the questions, that sounds like the best path.
I'm sorry, I couldn't remember the pathway.
Okay, thank you. Interim city manager. Yeah, you betcha. Thank you. So this funding has two pieces to it. So it's a total of $550,000. The first $50,000 is to support the United Way and the Community Foundation COVID-19 Response Fund. So this fund, which is actually now accepting applications, can help individuals whose incomes are affected due to impacts from job loss or other impacts from the COVID-19 emergency, that they can receive direct financial assistance for things like utility payments, rent, childcare, and basic needs. So our $50,000 contribution that's proposed would be leveraged with other contributions from both the public and private sectors. And the Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, Thurston County is coordinating the use of those resources. And so individuals that need assistance can actually call now. That number is 360-438-1100. And that's available Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So if you're needing assistance, there's a place for individuals to go. The second piece, the $500,000 that's set aside is for use as part of our regional effort being organized by Mike Reed, our Economic Development Director. Although there is not a firm plan in place for these dollars yet, I think this sends a strong message to the community that we know assistance and recovery dollars are going to be needed to support our businesses, to get them back on their feet, healthy, and so that people can return to their jobs. So this work, just as kind of a draft scope, will include establishing a regional economic recovery task force with our economic partners like the EDC, the Chamber, the ODA, PAC Mountain Workforce Development, and our fellow communities in Tumwater and Lacey, as well as the county, are all participating in this effort. And there probably will be others that will join that as it moves along. So establishing that task force, we want to ensure that Thurston County and Olympia receive all of the economic recovery funds that are made available at the state, federal, and local levels. So we want to be a resource for that. It will include data gathering and deployment of those funds where needed, assistance with tracking, and also assisting folks with application for all the grants and funding programs that will be available, really just direct assistance to businesses for those applications, and then assessment of gaps in supply chains as a starting point. So as Mike gets a little further down the line on a firm scope for work, we'll bring that back to the finance committee in this council for input and comment. Again, the intent here is to make our dollars go as far as they can by leveraging other resources that are available at both the state and federal levels to ensure that our business community takes full advantage of every possible emergency fund and program that's being made available to them. So with that, I'll stop there and see what questions you might have. Just want to add one thing.
Thank you very much, Jay. I would just add that because there's no council meeting scheduled for the next two weeks, the finance committee didn't segregate the pots of money. We did it as one action with the understanding that it may very well be likely that there will be an unknown need that the city manager needs to respond to in the short term in between council meetings. And so he told us very definitively, he's not going to do that without talking to the members of the city council, but lacking a public meeting. And a great example is, you know, the Community Action Council is flooded with calls, and the money that they've raised has gone in a week. And it's very clear that there will be future asks for that fund coming back to government and the private sector. Happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Madron?
And I guess mine's more of a comment around inclusion in terms of the business community. And I just, as the planning process goes along, just I'd encourage folks to think about what kind of businesses might get left behind if they're not traditionally involved in the organizations that are involved. And particularly, I'm thinking about immigrant-owned businesses where there might potentially be a language barrier or something that would keep them from being able to access the information that's going to go out. And I think about cooperatives, too. They might have unique needs and resources that would be available to them. So maybe consulting with the Northwest Cooperative Development Center to make sure that their needs are also addressed. And I was glad to hear the inclusion of childcare in the work of the United Way components. And I think we also need to think about them on the business side of things because there's childcare providers that are businesses, and if our workers are going to get back to work, they need to be able to have a place to put their kids because we don't know when schools are going to open again. That's it.
So I really appreciate you bringing up equity. There's one other thing we talked about in that vein at the finance committee meeting, and that was, you know, the small businesses in our community who may not be generating enough profit to qualify for a small business loan through FEMA, that, you know, there's going to need to be a mechanism in place to get, especially those restaurants, the money to be able to buy that inventory to open, you know, because they'll, assuming their families will have burned through the available cash to survive. And I already, and all of us already know restaurant owners who are in that situation. So equity all around. So thanks for bringing it up.
And I just want to add, too, that what this fund can help us with is make those short-term gap payments, or help them access short-term funding that will then get hopefully replaced by a federal bill that they're working on right now. There's a lot of money out there, and they're so close. And so being strategic about having folks with their eyes on nothing but getting money redirected to our community, I think is key. But this is that fund that can help kind of fill in, patchwork that gap until we get the money from the feds. So anyhow, Councilmember Parshley?
I'm going to just echo everybody. Good point, Councilmember Madron. I just wanted to mention that I'm in support of this, and I think this is a time when we need to allow Mike Reed and the interim city manager to be nimble and to respond to things that are coming up. That's all. I really, I guess I just, I approve, not that you need that, but I do, and I think it's an excellent plan.
We go with 4W? Oh, Councilmember Owens.
Mostly been said, just wanted to also underscore the importance that hoping that we can, as we're using some of this money, that maybe we can not only accomplish some of our recovery goals, but some of our other community goals, like equity that was mentioned, perhaps even climate or local resilience in general. And then just the importance of making sure that we're reaching out to businesses that aren't necessarily connected to the organizations mentioned. I did send, I did some outreach to some downtown businesses particularly, and I already sent some questions to Jay Burney and Mike Reed, but just about potential questions to ask in a survey out to those folks to see what would be most helpful. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to note that, especially in Olympia, we have a unique business climate, and there's so many micro businesses that might be, you know, looked over, not looked over, but just popped up through other organizations. So thank you for that. Sure.
And maybe more, the interim city manager can make a comment on how Mike Reed is using the ambassadors to get out and get the information out to the small businesses and hand out flyers. That's what they were telling me.
Well, that's changed a little bit in our current response. So right now, we don't have the ambassadors out in the community, especially during this two-week stay at home. That might change as we move forward on this. But the intent initially was we had them doing some initial outreach to some of the businesses. They were actually on the phone doing some of that and getting some data from Mike. So they've got some data they've received already that they've, I know they've passed on to Mike. And then, again, as we get to the other side of kind of our staffing shortages due to our response, I think there's some more work that they can help with, too, because they are a very valuable resource because people trust them with a lot of information.
All right. So we're good with 4W? All right. Then we'll go to 4S. Councilmember Gilman wanted to make a comment about the ADU plans.
Yes. First, I just wanted to say, there is city business continuing along. And one initiative that we've been talking about and working towards is creating a set of shared backyard cottage, mother-in-law apartment sort of plans, four plans that are developed with the artisans group that are available at the Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater Building Departments, and that have already been reviewed by our engineers and our plan checkers internally, so that a citizen who wants to, a resident who wants to build one of these cottages has some stock plans to start with, to take a look at. So we are joining with Tumwater to piggyback on the effort that Lacey began and also adding two more designs to the two that Lacey had. And I'm just, I'm pleased that we're moving forward with that. And just wanted to say, there are still city staff, even though they're working from home, they're still chunking away on these interesting projects.
Thanks for noting that. I, as you were talking, I was thinking about the old Sears &amp; Roebuck plans that you could order. We're going to have, like, hopefully backyard cottages that 100 years from now, they'll look back and go, I remember when the cities did that.
It makes me think of the kit homes that are on my street on Carline from the old lumber yard right in town. Like, someday, maybe you'll be able to buy the whole package, right?
That would, that'd be cool. All right. So that's item 4S. And then item 4, 4J? Yes, I did, sorry. Lots of alphabet soup tonight for consent. So 4J was approval of a resolution authorizing amendments to the Olympia City Council guidelines related to city council meetings. This is part of our emergency response measure that we filed, or that we approved last week. So I've got Kelly Purse-Brossit, our Communications Director, to talk about some of the things that we're trying to do to accommodate how to run a meeting in this time of crisis.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Councilmembers, good to be with you again. For the record, my name is Kelly Purse-Brossit. I'm Strategic Communications Director. So the changes to your council guidelines around how you conduct your meetings are in response to this public health crisis the community's facing. They allow you as a council to be flexible in continuing to meet as needed to keep the community moving forward while balancing your safety, the community's safety, and the directions from the governor. The changes include limiting or eliminating public comment at your meetings, establishing some needed distancing protocols by keeping the chamber closed during your meetings, while also allowing opportunities for the community to still view the proceedings either online, on television, or through resources here at City Hall. We're also opening new resources like Engage Olympia, which we did today, to provide the community a place to comment on the agenda before the meeting, so you can have those. Again, the recommendation, the recommended changes are all about flexibility and transparency during the public health crisis.
Thank you. Any questions for Kelly? All right. Thanks for going over that with us.
Thank you.
A lot of, you know, every day, there's something new on our plates. Our email, email boxes are full. We're grappling, I think that's going to be the word for 2020, is grappling. That and chunking, grappling mostly, because it's just how we roll these days. So, all right. So we've gotten, I think, all of our questions answered around our consent calendar. So I'm going to call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. There's a big, big chunk of staff work that we just approved. So thank you very much for that. So we don't have any other business on tonight's agenda. We've been trying to, you know, keep our staff working remotely, so there's just not something that we needed to pull anybody in on tonight. So with that, I just have a quick mayor's report, and they'll open it up to council and our city manager. So as I mentioned earlier, there will not be regular business meetings the next two weeks unless we have some emergency that we need to reconvene for. I'm assuming all of us are still going to be in town the next couple of weeks because we're supposed to be, not going anywhere. I encourage everybody at home, if you haven't already, to go on the State of Washington website, and you can get the current directives from the state and the governor's office on how we need to be managing our world for the next two weeks here. And as well, I think, I think that's all. We are also doing updates. You can go to our Facebook page every day. There's a new update on what we're doing, or almost every day. So like us on Facebook, but then as well, you can go to our city website, and on the landing page, there's our COVID response. So with that, I will start with our mayor for Tim.
Nothing to her pardon.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have three quick items that are from the finance committee meeting on Wednesday. So the first one, we talked a little bit about business and occupational taxes and parking and business improvement area payments that are coming due. And so I wanted to, excuse me, I wanted to go ahead and just read a statement because the city manager has taken action around both of those under the emergency powers that we gave him last week. So the city of Olympia will be deferring payments of business and occupational taxes for businesses financially impacted by the COVID-19 virus. Business and occupational taxes normally due at the end of April will be due on July 31st. Council will continue to assess the economic situation and adjust if necessary. The city will also be deferring payment of parking and business improvement area assessments for those financially impacted by COVID-19. Assessments normally due at the end of February will be due on July 31st. Council will continue to assess the economic situation and adjust if necessary. The city is also working to set up an online certification system for businesses to notify the city. So that's parking and business improvement, or parking and business improvement area and occupation tax. Also, the finance committee had a discussion about the year-end balancing. So we, city manager Burney and I had a proposal to bring to finance that kind of went through all of the expenditures and kind of, kind of...
went through all of the expenditures and kind of balanced the budget for 2019. But because of the COVID-19 emergency, we have made a recommendation to council as a finance committee, and this will come to us at our next meeting in two weeks, April 14th. So we have, after we do some obligations from the year-end balance that were left in the 2020 budget that we already spent and replenish our, replenish our reserves, we have $1.4 million available in our year-end balance. And the Finance Committee recommendation is to allocate $495,000 of that to building, repair, and maintenance, primarily because we have a significant roof issue that needs to be replaced on the Hands-on Children's Museum. And then to set aside the rest of that fund, available funds, in an unallocated reserve, which may be available for the emergency or will be allocated when we come out of this and we've been able to use other funds for the emergency. So that's that one. And then the last thing is just that the Finance Committee has agreed, and we will meet every two weeks as needed through the emergency so that we can keep recommendations coming to you and responding to the staff needs primarily around new funding. Or as we move ahead, I think it's really important for everyone in the community to understand, you know, we have a pretty significant cash flow crisis looming, just as a city. And we talk about the sales tax being 27% of our general fund. We talk about, you know, the BNO taxes being, you know, $4 or $5 million a year of revenue that come in. And so there's going to be some hard times, but I think right now, if people want to go to the city website and they can look at the COVID-19 page, and you can see some of the things that the city manager has already put in place, like a soft hiring freeze and reducing expenditures as much as possible within the department so that we can be ready to weather the storm. But Finance Committee will bring back more story to tell you as we run those crisis scenarios and figure out where our balance point is for, you know, if people don't pay their garbage bill or water bill, how long we can go before we have to find other money to supplement a utility is another great example. So just want to make sure you're in the loop and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Cooper? All right, Councilmember Parshley.
I have one thing to report, which almost seems like it was 100 years ago. It was on March 11th, we had a LOT board meeting before this really became aware of how serious this was. But, you know, let's talk about LOT and some of the things that we're going to have to worry about in the future. We worked on the cost-of-service consultant interviews, and we have chosen our top pick, and they're in the middle of negotiating. And for those of you who don't remember, the cost-of-service analysis is to make sure that we are actually charging the appropriate amount for water because one of our numbers that we're using to calculate it was established in the early 1990s, and with water conservation, those numbers have changed, so we're reviewing that. We're also asking them to review and hopefully give us hints for how we can help with affordable housing and so forth. Then we received an update on our biologic process, which is nearing completion in the design, and we'll see what COVID does, but they're expecting to start construction in January of 2021. They are predicting there could be six days of closure for the Marine Drive. We will let the city know so we can get that notification out when that occurs. The fun fact, I learned that when we get this building in place, LOT could be saving every year between $385,000 to $560,000 a year in our energy efficiencies. So they, once again, LOT is always looking outside the box to try to make an impact, positive impact on the climate. That is it.
Any questions for Councilmember Parshley? That does seem like a long, long time ago. Every day seems like a week right now. All right, Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. First, the Land Use and Environment Committee is canceled for this week. And inner-city transit is, you know, working hard to respond to this. If you've seen one of their buses going by, if you've been out of your house, it says, "Be safe, stay home" on the reader board across the front. They are encouraging people to only make essential trips, follow the governor's instruction, and only use the bus for the same, either you're in an essential employment or you've got a trip to the doctor or something. Otherwise, if you're off the bus, just like if you're off the roads, you're safe, not exposed to anybody, not exposing anybody else, and you're allowing fewer drivers to be out running. So their hope is that you'll stay home unless it's an essential trip. And then last, you know, in our conversations about allocating funds and trying to respond, we don't know how long or what the extent will be, but we do know that we can put some things in place right away today, like allowing our economic development staff to start positioning to apply for whatever comes available for assistance. And I hope that the crisis will spark opportunities for creating a more equitable, more just-in-humane society and economy, but I know that that's long work. And then in the short term, we're trying to keep things stood up, position ourselves to take whatever assistance is available from the state and federal level. And I just want to close by saying I have a lot of faith in what the city staff, under the leadership of city manager Jay Burney, are doing, and I'm really comfortable with our response and proud of it.
That was just, that was great. Thank you. Councilmember Madron?
I just wanted to briefly speak about the Regional Transportation Policy Board, which also happened a long, long time ago on March 11th. And one of the, one of the things that was brought to my attention and the rest of the board was that we are, as a region, are not on track to meet our goals around vehicle miles traveled. And this particularly pertains to climate change. And the, they were, they were just about to launch a study on telecommuting on Tuesdays to see how that impacted things like vehicle miles traveled. And, you know, Clark was just talking about some of the things that could come out of this crisis that can change our society in ways that are better. And I, I will be very interested to see an analysis on our carbon emissions when we get through this and to know that we actually can meet these goals if we just, you know, we've all been pushed into doing things very, very differently in a very short amount of time. I would encourage, you know, us at the city to be looking at that in terms of our staff and then all the employers in our region to, you know, we're demonstrating right now that we can do it. So that's all.
Thank you. And there's dolphins in the canals at Venice. Councilmember Rollins?
Nothing to report. I just wanted to mention while I was on that website, the state's coronavirus.wa.gov, I noticed that there's a big shortage of blood donations. So while you have time off, if you have time off, please consider making a donation at the blood center in town and go get a free cookie.
Excellent reminder. Thank you. And make sure you take your temperature before you go. Interim city manager, Dave Burney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few items tonight to report.
Just a few.
To start with, I just want to mention that today Thurston County released its plan for deploying resources to serve our houseless population in response to the COVID-19 emergency. It deploys resources in the areas of expanded shelter space so that we can achieve six-foot separation of those that are sheltered, expanding the 24-hour shelter options. It provides basic survival needs to both our sheltered and unsheltered population, which includes better access to hygiene as well as food and meal delivery options. And it also helps in identifying locations and staffing for quarantine and isolation as those, as those needs arise in folks that don't have a place to do that on their own. The budget for this plan is about $2.4 million. It leverages a $1 million grant from the state with contributions from local jurisdictions and others. They will also be dedicating any FEMA state and federal funds that they can towards this plan to help close the gap. They recognize, the county does at this point, that this plan is not yet fully funded, and they'll prioritize this work based on the funding that's available at any given time. I want to personally thank county staff, along with Keith Daley, Carrie Retlin, and other city staff for their input and for pulling this plan together so quickly so that we can deploy these resources immediately in our community.
Is that your total report, or did you want to go?
I had a couple more items.
Yeah, okay. So do you want to go both? So did anybody have any questions for Jay?
So the, when we asked at the beginning about the city's reporting and the website, there's no mention on the website about this piece. And I know we wanted to defer to the county, but I also think it's, it would be helpful. There's a lot of community interest in, like, the handwashing stations we put out, the efforts we did to find better locations for some of our mitigation site residents. If it's, if it's possible to report out some of the efforts, because I, I believe the city was doing a lot over the last couple of weeks, and, and it's, I just, I would appreciate if we had some reporting of our separate efforts, even though we defer to the county for the overall plan.
I think, I think Keith can give you a couple updates now.
That would be wonderful. I think it'd be very helpful.
Some of this is breaking news, right?
Yeah, like, so the, I'll just say that the county plan, we just got it today, and I launched it out to all of you right away, and we can definitely get that posted up. And I think you bring up a good point. I think as we're evaluating our communication needs on lots of fronts and things are moving very quickly, the ability for us to summarize some of these on our websites so people can get to them quickly is good, and then maybe Keith can give a quick update.
Where do we start? As you said, March 11th seems like a lifetime ago. We've been busy, as you have been as well, primarily trying to get additional sanitation facilities out into the field where people need them, and also balancing the impacts of our availability of restrooms with our staff operations. So Jay and myself and Paul Simmons, our Parks and Parks Director, have been working on that very closely. We have 10 individuals who are currently housed in a hotel, recognizing the potential impacts on highly vulnerable populations. We worked directly with our peers at the county to figure out a plan for that, a response plan for the mitigation. It's not perfect, and obviously, it will continue to grow. As city manager Bernie indicated, there's about $1 million in funding right now and $2.4 million in identified expenses. So, but on my math, those numbers are not equal. There's about a $1.4 million difference there. So there's going to have to be some work, and I think generally, we recognize that there will be additional funding coming forward, particularly as the 2020-21 budget comes into effect at the state level. And also, there'll be additional funds coming to us through FEMA. So we're confident that we can meet the need, at least as it's identified in the plan. We'll be working with Keely and Tom Webster to help to identify how we close that gap because, you know, at this moment, I can't say, you know, specifically how we intend to plug that gap. But it'll take city resources, it'll take county resources, it'll take state resources and federal resources, and we hope to rely on all of those. So happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We also delivered another tiny triplex to the mitigation site just this last week.
I wish I could share the video with you. Mike Otter and Olympia Construction finished construction of the units. It's a duplex this time, so they're larger, they're handicap accessible. The individual units are larger and handicap accessible. And I was walking by the mitigation site on Friday, and Brandon said, "I wish we could get that facility over here." And I was like, "Well, what's wrong?" Well, we can't get it from here to there. There was a problem with the forklift, so we called SNL, and they sent down a crane. And we picked it up, and we dropped it into the mitigation site, and there were people living in it Friday evening. Yeah.
Yay. Good news. Thank you. And thanks for all of your, your work with your team. You guys have been scrambling big time, so. Okay, next.
Just a few more items, just operational nature. So based on the governor's stay-home, stay-healthy directive, most of our city services, nonessential services in our buildings have been closed. We're going to extend that closure out to April 10th. I want to comment, based on a comment that Councilmember Gilman made about just how big this consent packet is. And we have several hundred employees telecommuting from home, and they're working hard, and they're keeping regular city business moving in the midst of a crisis. And I've seen partnerships evolve as this has gone on. I've seen employees do some remarkable things. I've watched police and fire work together on protocols to keep each other safe as they respond and work with each other on that. And I've watched our employees, time and time again, get creative in finding ways to deliver services in a really tough time. When crisis hits, we lean in. That's what we do as, as public servants, all of us, including you as a council, and we're all doing that as best we can. And so I just want to just extend my personal thank you to everyone involved in helping our community through a really challenging time, and we will get through this together.
And I just got a hand cramp signing all of these ordinances. So yes, they've been working very, very hard. Any more questions for interim city manager Bernie? All right. With no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.